Right here. Does that qualify?
That qualifies.
We'll call this August 28 Jackson County Commissioned Work Session and Meeting to the Order and have our roll call.
Mr. Porter, Mr. Guttin?
Present.
Mr. Green, Mr. Guttin?
Present.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Seuss, turn up. Is everyone else so present?
Hey, do you have a form present this evening? We'll have our invitation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Seuss.
God, our Father, we're thankful for your gracious love that you share amongst us all, and we're thankful for the chance to live in this great country and this county. Right now, we issue a special prayer for those in Texas and soon to be in Louisiana that are suffering because of the floods and because of the hurricane. We pray you'll be with them and give them comfort and guidance and help them in the best way possible. God, we pray that you'll continue to watch over us all and guidance in Christ's name.
Praise the Lord, Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda. We have eight items on our work session agenda. And currently 12 items. We'll approve the meeting agenda after we get to the work session. So begin with the work session agenda and approval of those items. Do we have any changes before we proceed? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda for the work session?
I have a motion.
Motion, we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
And opposed say no. Okay, any work presentations or public comments? We have Mr. Martin from Holcomb who signed up this evening.
All I'm asking for is a copy of the contract I had back 2009. I ain't been able to get one. Mr. Porter brought the contract up. I'd like for you to come up with one.
Okay. I think we don't have an executed copy of one, correct?
That's right. What is that? Right there, if anybody wants to read it.
What is that?
That's a minute.
It's got what that?
So what you want is you the copy of it?
I kept it for seven years.
You want a copy of it?
I want a copy of the contract. Well, it was fine. So I want Mr. Porter to have the contract up.
We'll see if we can find, we'll see if we can find a copy. I don't know that we can, we've looked and we've not been able to locate one at this point, correct? Not a signed copy.
Yeah, I don't have a copy signed.
I don't, do we have something that's not signed? That wouldn't be official.
There were several contracts from Mr. Holcomb. I don't know about, I don't know, I just make a book.
Okay. We can see if we can find one around that timeframe, but we've looked for a signed copy and we don't, we can't find a signed copy.
I have one myself, but I can't take it today. What you have? But Mr. Porter brought the contract up, my office, 2009. So we're going to, can you get me an extra?
Well, we don't have a signed version. We know that. I mean, we've looked for a signed version, so we don't have a copy of that. If we may be able to find the unsigned copy, that would be unofficial. But we may be able to find an unsigned copy.
You're going to look, you're going to look for it and get me a copy out there and ask.
We'll see.
That's all I'm asking.
All right.
I got 30 hours, got my mouth up there. Now, Mr. Porter, he's going to go to contract up.
Thanks, sir. Okay, move into our work session discussion items. The first item is the excess driveway in the Riverland State Subdivision. Do you have that?
Yes, I do. Mr. Davis contacted our office about purchasing some excess driveway. It's off of River Drive. This is off County Road 113. He's wanting to put a driveway across it. Nothing is on it at the time. It's not being used for anything. I think maybe Mr. Venable may be familiar with it. Did he contact you?
I talked to Greg.
Oh, okay, Greg did, okay. He's the surveyor. He came up on this. And I believe Jonathan talked with Mr. Porter about it and he said what needed to be done is this man, Mr. Davis, needs to pay for an appraisal. And I gave you a list of appraisers in Jackson County. There may be others, I don't know. But y'all need to choose an appraiser and then we will tell him to use whichever appraiser and he's got to pay for it, the appraise.
That's something we choose, you say?
Isn't that right, Mr. Porter? Is that?
Yeah, we can choose the appraisal or appraiser to get it appraised and then he'll pay for that to whoever the commission directs. And then, once that's done, determine the fair market value of it and then the commission can either vote to sell it or not sell it. If it is not beneficial to the county. And I don't think, by discussions with Mr. Campbell, the county has no use for property or no anticipated use in the future for property. Just a little corner section that doesn't do anybody any good.
It won't have to go to public bid?
No. You give it, sell it at fair market value, which you can do based on the appraisal.
Well, we need to vote to select that appraisal company?
So it's no value to us, is what you're saying now?
That's my understanding is it.
It's just.
It's outside the property. I mean, it's kind of weird shape.
Yeah, it has a weird shape. I mean, it's, it's not going to affect the road or maintaining the road or anything like that if we sell this piece.
If there's no use to it.
It's kind of an odd shape in the subdivision.
It has a value, but it's just no use to the county.
Okay, so I don't know that we have this on our meeting agenda. Is this something?
I didn't know if y'all need time to discuss and think about it before you vote on the appraiser.
Well, if we want to make a recommendation tonight or how do we want to go, what would be a proper way to finish the left here appraiser?
Just choose one. We're all qualified to give residential real estate appraisals as far as I know.
We want to move forward with this tonight then? And we want to take a look at this and make a decision at our next meeting? And do we want to proceed?
I said move forward. I hope we give the chairman permission to execute the appraisal.
Then we'll have that on the meeting agenda to follow to make a decision on that. Any other questions or comments to this man? All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is regarding a litter control van. Y'all have copies of some costs in here. I believe litter controls, we have some of the volunteers their time, am I correct? To take inmates out and still do litter control to some extent. The van they use, I think, is aged and having some issues, if I understand it. And they're requesting that we replace this van. The benefit, of course, is that we are having a volunteer that takes care of this process for it. And of course, we all hear about littering in our communities. So it is important, an important piece of it. Based on what he's looked at, I think we've looked at some used prices and he's looked at some new prices. So you've got in your packets some copies of quotes. I think, let's see, first one may be, the one you have in your packets may be the state bid quote for that process. So are there any questions or comments on this? This may not be something we're ready to move forward with tonight, but I would like for everybody to be aware of it.
Can't you use it to take your mates back for a thought, sir?
I'll let you start picking up trash.
Didn't we buy a vehicle for that purpose and then we done away with it? That person because of their budget?
We didn't buy a vehicle. We bought a trailer, I think, didn't we?
Probably. You got a huge vehicle.
Oh, did we?
I can't remember what we done.
I think it was probably, was it?
Did y'all?
Pick-up truck.
Well, now, you did buy a pickup truck.
It's been given to Carl.
I can't remember what, what we done.
I was thinking we bought a van, a used van at one time. Might have been before y'all.
I don't miss those things in here. I don't remember a van.
It was a truck, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, we did buy a truck and that's what Carl's got here.
So any thoughts or questions on this? I want to bring this up and I'd like you to consider, we'll put it on the next work session if those opposed to that. Try to get some different prices. There may be an opportunity to utilize one of the council made you have. I don't know if that would be something he'd be interested in.
He'd be one?
Yeah, he'd be.
Probably so, because he's sitting on the side of the road, you know, while they're picking up trash, that type of thing.
And this was the lower photo too. This is the state bid price that you see before you. So if everyone would consider that, look at that and we'll discuss this further in the next work session, determine if that's something we can move forward with. One of the used prices, I think, we're looking at was somewhere around 21. There were some less expensive that had a whole lot more miles on them. So he has looked at some used prices and we can try to get with this though, so we can share that with you.
Next work session.
Yeah, we'll put this on the next work session and further discussion. Just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, the van I think he has now is in, you know, he feels like may, may. So it is something he's needing to move forward with. So we can discuss it next week. We'll be our next work session, that's right.
Tuesday?
Yeah, next Tuesday. Okay, next item regarding the city easement on the Daryl property. And we should have a resolution on this. We have a resolution on this. I'll give a copy of the resolution for our meeting. The, do you want to explain this, Sheriff, to what they're planning to do?
Yeah, I think they're just going to basically widen that ditch or put in larger pipes or something. I think it's going to open views, but anyway, the jail fence crosses over into where they're going to be working. They're willing to make the fence down. There's a row of cars that we have there. Some of them are city vehicles, some of them are admin vehicles, one thing and another. And they're going to move those at their expense. And the only thing I ask for them to do is, since it's so late in the year, the grass is not going to grow back after they go through there and work, is to fill all that in with crush run gravel and their engineers said they would do that. Because there's not going to be enough time for grass to grow and I don't have no mud back there. So as long as they do that and put my fence back up, I'll be happy. I don't think they're going to interfere with any of the property here when it starts encroaching on us anymore, though, that just the fence is in the way of doing the work.
Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Porter, do you see any issue with us providing an easement to the city?
I don't see it. I think it's to widen what they're already got.
And then while they're doing the work, they're going to put in some kind of new sewage system too. I don't know if they talked to you about that or not at the jail.
You mentioned talking about it in detail.
A new basket that catches the trash that gets flushed out of the jail to keep it from going downstream into the sewage plant. Our maintenance people have to eat. So they're going to put in a better system while we're all doing this at the same time.
All right. Is there any objection to putting this on the agenda immediately to follow?
As long as we draw it up like he does specify, they take care of it. All he's asking right there.
The biggest thing for me, of course, I know they'll put my fence back up, but the biggest thing is the mud. I really want a bunch of crush run gravel dumped in there to prevent that.
All right. If there's an objection, we'll place that at the end of our agenda. Thank you, Sheriff.
I mean, this is not an easement. This is a grant outright of property. It makes a difference. But this is deeding the property to the city. It's not an easement. And that makes a difference. Do we use it for anything?
The, I'm assuming you're, no, outside the fence, no. And there's a, there's a small section that the fence comes down and then kind of just goes out for maybe five or six feet. I don't know if they're going to take that space up or not, but if they do, it's, it's not going to hurt me in any. And it has something to do with that, that manhole, the reason it cuts out like that. I mean, all, where those cars are all lined up, they'll just be moved up six feet or so. So it's not going to hurt anything we do in there. Is it the straight between the jail and the hospital? It's the ditch between where Dr. Bradford's office is at and in, in the cemetery. That goes along behind that plant there, whatever that is now. Does that make sense? Between us and the jail or the ditch between us and then is where they're going to be working, doing whatever they're doing. So is it 164 acres? Is that what it is? Is that what it amounts to? I have no idea of the acreage of it.
Well, the. They came out and showed you what you, what they were.
We've talked with the engineer, yes.
The description is for an easement for construction, relocation, repair of existing storm drain facilities and utility lines. But then the documents we have here, what the mission to look at is a deed, it just deeds them the property.
They've never asked that. All they were talking to me was tearing down the fence, moving the vehicles, and they were going to be working back there. They've never asked me or said anything to me about deeding them any property. That's up to y'all.
What do we need to, how do we need to process this? Do we need to clarify that before we move forward with the city?
That would be my recommendation, that we see them, because land apparently did this survey. We just probably all look at a flat and see what they're really talking about. If it doesn't bother the sheriff and he doesn't.
There's nothing back there as long as they move those vehicles on at their cost and put them back. I mean, we're out nothing but whatever property y'all decide to.
When you grant an easement, you deed the easement, don't you? Deeded easement, it's not actually deeding the property, it's just the deed of the easement.
That's what an easement is. But this, the document here says it's a deed. It's an outright conveyance of the property. Which may be fine, I don't know what it is.
It's not going to hurt the town. It's not.
What they're saying is we're going to be giving up the property right there, but it's a deed going to come to the city.
It'd be okay to do it because we're common good. It's not, we're common fucking good.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it or if it's not a good idea. I'm just saying that we're using two different terms.
What you're saying is it's still not going to belong to us, at least the easement, it's going to come later.
Which is fine, if that's okay.
Well, then how do we want to proceed? Do we want to get this clarified as to participation, bring it back next week, next Monday? Or Tuesday? I'm sorry.
Start on the work.
They told me sometime in September.
We have time to clarify.
It'd be the second week of September that we'd be able to vote on it and it'd be the 10th.
I'm fine with it either way. I mean, we're not using the property. It doesn't matter if it's a deed, easement or a deed out. Six tent and make it, we were really trying to.
We could have it on next meeting and just, and then all the, everything's correct.
Okay. Do we want to have a special meeting then to vote on it next week, is that what you're saying? Or just the work session then?
Did they, did they, we're cleaning by it?
What's that?
I mean, if they want this right here, it had to be some bagging involved, you know?
Well, they're wanting for that drainage. They're going to widen that ditch to keep water from backing up.
They're going to put a new sanitary.
It's going to improve the whole benefit at all. Somewhere it's, it's going to allow more water to flow.
Okay.
More and faster, I guess.
If I could recommend that we, just to clarify then, we can have the meeting continued until next Monday and we'll vote on this one item next Monday prior to our work session. We'll do that on Tuesday. Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Porter, do you care to deal with the city attorney to discuss that? Thanks, sir. Okay. Next item regarding map department, some budget changes.
I think you had a couple. I had a couple items. One of them, I just, was just a request to move. It's out of my real freighter fund. And I'm just going to move $2,000 from object code 180 to object code 269. We put it in there in GIS money and I use it to send my mapper to some schooling, but the state said they would really rather that we didn't take it out of GIS money that it come out of travel and training. So I just want to move 2,000 from one line item to another, just to cover that line item.
So all we're, all he's requesting is to move the budgeted amount, the $2,000 in budgeted dollars from the GIS to the travel. Similar to what we did with the parks department and sanitation a couple weeks ago, correct?
I've got a letter that I requested, Mr. Manley's.
And there are no, the total budget remains the same, correct? So any questions on that? Any, if there's no objection, then we'll put that, have that on the agenda following to vote on that as well?
The other one was on the coming years budget, so I don't, that's what we need to worry about that. Y'all haven't finalized it yet, have you?
Correct.
Yes, I'm doing it now.
If you could get something on it, we'll have the budget meeting next week. Okay? Any further questions on that? Okay. Next item regarding the software system for the probate revenue office. This is something we discussed during the budget meeting. We have copies of contracts for these items. I think the bank, yeah, we've got them on the table here, I believe. Software for this. I believe everybody's been emailing a copy a week or two ago. In order to move forward with this, Mr. Porter, is this something that if we budget, we can move forward with or is this something that we'll need to approve these contracts separately?
The contracts will need to be approved because it's got terms, continuing terms in it. Whether it's in the budget or not, it's fully approved.
And have you got time to review?
I have, I think I have. These are the same ones we sent out last week.
Correct. So this is something, again, we discussed in the work session previously and you want to kind of share real quickly?
When I talked to Mr. Cohen today, Lance Cohen from NIDCO, he told me that he sent those contracts just for us to, it's just a general contract. He thought we just needed them for our budgetary process. So they would really like to meet with us and fine tune the contracts. He just, like I said again, he just thought because of the way our budgets work, that we just needed something to prove it. So, so he.
I think my response was, I don't want anything but the technical aspect of these contracts. What they're actually going to do.
I can't comment on that.
That'd be a good idea.
So the process to move forward, we can, if we, I think we've already looked at including this in the budget. What we can do then is work with, work with them to go ahead and get some detailed contracts.
I'll get them, I'll get them here and we'll, like I said, that's just a general contract. I think they send anybody, but they might want to detail ours. You know, because they mentioned letting us pay it out in a couple of years and so we might want to mention this stuff in the contract.
Is this the same plan you two judges talked about here at Fort Smith?
NIDCO, yes, yes.
Now, some, some county right here nearby that was.
DeKalb.
Changed over.
Yeah, DeKalb, Cherokee, Coleman. I'm actually going to go to Coleman in the morning because Coleman, Cherokee and DeKalb have all switched to them and they're going to do a demonstration there. So I'm going to head to Coleman in the morning and kind of check it out, kick the tires before we buy.
Yeah, that's what I don't want to find out much here and then good.
Well, we're already satisfied as far as we're concerned. We've already saw what it does with ours.
Yeah, they got a really great reputation. I don't know if y'all remember several years ago when Jefferson County, you know, it was all over the news that their tagline, it took you eight hours to get a tag. This is the company that went in there and got their taglines from eight hours to 30 minutes. You know, so they're, they're good. I mean, that's what they're doing.
So we'll proceed as that then. We will, right now, I think that is in the budget, is that correct? And then we'll request a, or request time to sit down and get more detailed contracts together so that hopefully we can get that done before the end of September. And you have planning to go in October, first of October sometime?
Whenever just.
I won't switch to the cemetery. As long as they're free and we sign contracts, I won't switch.
We need to do it at the same time because the systems need to work together. So we, I mean, we can wait till they're ready.
All right. Okay, we'll proceed as stated there. Next item is regarding the electronic poll books. I think we discussed this before and you had some clarification on it.
Yeah, I did. Actually, Ms. Gilbert had mentioned this last time. And we went back and we, we kind of put a, a number at 500, 500 registered voters per precinct as a guide to put these electronic poll books. So it's got it down to about 33. Like I say, we're right around $30,000 with what we have in habit funds. So it's not going to be $25,000 like we had mentioned before. I had that in my mind that we put them everywhere, which sounds good, but we have a lot of places that have few registered voters and many fewer that even vote. So, you know, it's a, I mean, a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars. And if you're not having an issue with, with time, there's really no reason to do that. Carl said that he'd use it at Thackler back last, not this past primary, but the general election. But I mean, everybody's used them, has, I think has saw a benefit of them. So we're down to about 33 is what we counted. Like I say, I've got around $30,000. So we're pretty close. We're not going to need $20,000 from y'all, but it'd be a lot more, a lot less if we need any at all. So can't give you a number, but that's what, that's what we're to, they use them 500 voters.
So you've got a grant for this to come, a big part of it, what you're talking about?
Yes.
If we were to do anything, do you think $10,000 would be?
I think, I think that would be more than adequate, absolutely.
If we were to, and, and this is something we can determine how we want to move forward. We can vote on this this evening. We can discuss this further in the budget meeting. We'll have one immediately after and then we'll have another next week. But if we do approve an amount, an amount up to 10,000 or something like that, so that if it's not needed for the liquidity.
And I really think we're going to be close to the money that we have. So I don't really foresee using any, very little if any, but I think that would be very safe.
So how do we want to proceed? Do we want to move forward tonight? Do we want to discuss this further in our budget meeting?
Are you going, are you going to go closer on numbers when you, when you look at it a little further?
No, I mean, that's it. We're 33. The deal is, the deal, yeah, we need 33 of them. The deal is, I can't tell you exactly what they're going to charge. If it's going to be $982 or $1,014. So, I mean, we're right at, we've got right about $30,000. So we know, I think we've covered it. But we know that we need 33 and we need to, you know, we borrowed, I don't know, 14, whatever, 16, 15, this past primary. I guess they're going to let them use them in the runoff. We may try a different kind of the December general election, but we're going to have to have our own vault and ready to go for, what we got, March, June, what is it? June, June primary? So we got to have them ready for that.
I just don't want to spend if it's not necessary, because I hold my, and rally, it's not necessary at all.
Yeah, you're on, you're on a view.
No more than we, we have voters.
We're looking at five, any, any place that there's 500 registered voters.
I figure this last election was probably going to be one of the biggest in Jackson County they've ever had, probably ever will be, you know?
Actually, it was, you talking about the November general election?
No, the first one back then, no.
Presidential election?
Yeah, the November.
Yeah, that, that was actually, we actually voted fewer people than we did four years before.
So it had more.
But that's, but that's a typical, but that's a typical general election. We have those in presidential. We, we've run 20, 22,000 and I think the same people vote. You'll see next year's general is usually around 12 to 13, anywhere up to 15, 13 to 15,000 is what you'll see. But what we're going by is we're going by the precinct. So if there's 500 registered voters, they get one. If there's less than that, they just use the paper book. So I see exactly what you're saying and that's what we did. Ms. Gilbert had mentioned it and that we went back and kind of used, we come up with 500, which was pretty fair. And it really did limit the number that we needed and it makes sense to have them.
Five thousand would be more than enough if we did something up to that.
I, I think so. Like I say, I just, I don't have an exact number per unit, so that's why I don't want to be too, too bold in saying that I've got enough money to do it.
So, do we have a recommendation on how we do want to proceed with this, or move forward tonight, next work session, or further at the budget meetings? Come on in. Come on in. Here's a few states there.
With Israel nation of five, just for the nation of five other.
I could have a difference in anything, but I haven't proved.
Absolutely.
It just moved same law so much better.
And y'all used one this last time, too, right? No, he did, he did. Brian did. He didn't do, so you saw a difference from last time.
I can see a difference, and it took a little longer.
I think they're great, I really do. And now in software, we've done, we had six, that first trial run, and it didn't slow anything down, but I don't think you saw efficiency. We had 12 the other day, really didn't get a good test run with us, but we, but that, that 33 is including having 12 ex-occults. That should make a difference.
All right. So, if that's the recommendations to put it on the agenda this season, okay, we'll have that as the last item on the agenda this season. Okay? Okay, the next item regarding the, this will be your 2018 department contracts. We have four contracts, and I'll let Ms. Thurman identify what those are for.
Okay, going by the numbers on the back, we have Medicaid waiver contract, which is for our ten home services with Medicaid waiver. That's the only contract this time, it is not, was not level funded, but it did, it did increase a few cents per hour. So, that, that would be very helpful. Then the Alabama cares contract is, is level funded, and that is for caregivers, it's for caregivers, which that program has gone down significantly in the last, excuse me, few years, but we still have numbers of people who use that. Senior RX contract, I can't speak to that. And then the, the aging contract. And I believe you all received at least the aging contract and the senior RX contract. And the aging contract covers any, any of our programs, our meals in the camp, the nutrition program, and any of the programs that we have going on that cover aging. Does anyone have?
Any questions on that?
Questions?
We do also, we're doing a draft condition now, asking for contracts this year.
Well, we, we do a contract every year on this. There are some differences. The senior RX, I believe, is the same, those are the same amount of dollars received previously, correct, Mr. Manning?
Most of them.
As far as the other contracts, I think that they, they try to increase the goals every year. My understanding is the goals have been increased, but they're within ranges that we've achieved previously, so that there shouldn't be any issues with achieving those goals. So, and we do have the full copies of the contracts here. Any other questions or comments at this time on these? Something that's done every year around this time, and, Mr. Porter, do you have anything?
I think it's going to be same or similar than they have in any place.
Okay. All right, so any further questions on those? Okay, if there's no objection, have these four items on the agenda to follow. Okay. Next item is regarding Cusa Valley detention contract. You have a copy of the youth services contract, this is something that we maintain annually, correct, Mr. Manning?
That's correct.
For our juvenile services. The, the cost on this varies from year to year depending on what we utilize and what that costs.
It's a number of beds that we have to reserve down there.
Do you, if you want to share anything on this?
Just that, I think it's true, we said that we have to retain two beds per night.
Right now, this meeting, I need to, we need to- Again, this is something that's done, I think, every year, this is a renewal of the contract in place. Do you have any questions or comments on this item? If there's no objection, we'll have this on the agenda to follow as well. Okay? Okay, with that, okay, we will take a five-minute recess before the meeting and proceed with the motion. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order. We'll have the board to proceed to approve of the agenda. Everything that we have listed on the agenda is, remains the same with exception of item number three, that's removed from the meeting agenda. The rest remaining, or the remaining numbers will stay, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
We have a motion to items on the agenda.
The poll books is item number four.
14, and 13 was allowing you to get an appraisal for that piece of property.
Okay, that'd be item number one, yeah?
I think so, yeah.
Item one and four, take care of those two additions. I thought that we did, we're not, I don't know. Okay. All right, so do we have a-
There was one about the, excuse me, yeah, the riverland of State Subdivision.
We're continuing that?
Oh, okay.
No, no, we're not continuing that, we're continuing the jail. Right?
Continuing, yeah, that's right.
The other one was letting you get the appraisal.
To allow the commissioner, the chairman to appoint the appraisal.
Right. That's what needs to change, too.
That's, okay.
So, that's 14?
Yeah, 13. Okay. And then that first item is actually omitted as well, we'll continue our meeting, but the first item is, and then the next one.
For the poll books?
Yeah, it's item number four.
So, okay.
Okay, so to clarify, items number one and three will be removed, and we'll have the addition to allow for appraisal on the property specified, and the remaining items will remain the same.
Actually, number ones will be tabled until-
Right.
They'll be removed until maybe-
Take this, it won't be approved on this, as you mentioned before.
There we go.
All right. So, do we have approval for those 11 to 12 items? A word.
Number one.
It'll be moved to the next meeting.
Doing away with number three.
Right.
Number four handles the poll book. And then 13 is allowing you to choose an appraiser.
Correct.
Okay. We're still in progress.
Any other question?
That change to the 12.
Do we have a motion to approve those items for the agenda?
I have a motion.
What, in a second?
I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Dave. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay, we have first amendment from the June, July meetings, so we have a motion, are any changes to those?
I'm making a motion.
Any kind of motion to proceed with them separately or together?
I'm making a motion to combine.
Motion to approve all of the items presented, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay. Okay, no old business, so the first item, the new business is the approval for the budget adjustment for the mapping department. This is the movement of $2,000 from GIS to the travel and training line item, does not change the bottom dollar amount of the budget. Do we have a motion to approve that change?
Make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay. Next item is regarding the purchase of electronic poll books. The recommendation as it stands would be to approve, allow for up to $5,000 to purchase the remaining poll books necessary beyond what the grant will pay for. So, do we have a motion to approve, make, yeah, motion to approve this up to $5,000 for this?
Motion.
Motion in a second?
I'll take a motion.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay, next item, motion to approve, we have four different contracts that pertain to senior services, would it be appropriate to combine these items? Okay, we have four different contracts, number five, six, seven, and eight regarding Medicaid waiver, Alabama care, senior RX, and our aging contract that we just discussed. So, are there, we can entertain a motion to vote on these together or separately?
Make, make sure to combine five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Have a motion to combine and approve those items?
Yeah, I'm approving.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Anything further to add, Ms. Thurman?
No, sir.
Okay. A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay. Next item, motion to approve the FYI 2018 contract with Cusa Valley Detention Center, again, for our juvenile services as previously discussed. Do we have a motion to approve this contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye. The opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve the department's recommendation for the vacant temporary position with the parks department. We have a letter in your packets regarding this recommendation.
Should have.
We have a letter in our packets. Temporary position? Okay. Any questions or comments on this recommendation? Mr. Barnes, do you have anything to say?
This is paper six, Mike.
Do we have a motion to approve the department's recommendation for this item?
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve the department's recommendation for the vacant HMT one position for public works. You all have a letter in your packets regarding this item. Ms. Manning, do you have anything to share with us?
This young man is, has been one of our temporaries, and he's been doing a very good job for us.
Any questions or comments on this item? Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation as presented?
Make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay. Next item, motion to approve the department's recommendation for the vacant temporary labor position with the public works department. As the letter states, this is for two of the three, so we still have one vacant, correct?
Yes, we attempted to fill three positions, we offered it to five different people, and we only got to accept.
And we have another vacant, too.
Yes, we still have one to fill. Well, and there, yes, and there'll be another one, because this young man's moved from the temporary to the, so there'll be two temporary labor positions open.
So, any, any further questions on this? Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. And the final item is a motion to allow moving forward, or for the chairman to move forward with an appraisal, or to select the appraiser for the property listed in our report here. Do we have a motion to move forward with the process?
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions on this? Once it's completed, once we have the approval, or once we have the appraisal, then it'll be for the commission to make that we both to release the property.
For the appraisal.
Okay? So, any further questions or comments on this item? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Okay. That concludes the items on our agenda before we head into our budget meeting, so we'll go ahead and ask for reports. So, Ms. Thurman, do you have anything? Ms. Manning?
I will say that County Resident Community, federal project, they completed the paving of it, did the rock on the shoulders on Friday, and today they started on the garb rail, so we've about finished that paving project so far.
That was very good, thanks, John. How long have you provided in the time?
I've got it.
Thank you. Anything, Thurman? Thank you. Mr. Porter?
All right.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Manning?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Medwin?
No.
Mr. Sis? Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah.
Mr. Gethin?
No, sir.
A reminder that our next meeting, our meeting next week will be on Tuesday, the fifth, thank you, since Monday is a holiday. So, with that, we are going to continue, which we'll have a budget meeting afterwards,[1775.83]